Um. Uh, this is Al Ochoza and I don't have any conflicts.
Um.
Stephanie, will you go next?
Uh, this is Stephanie Neal and I have no known contract conflicts of interest.
John?
Uh, John, Fides Family Farms, no new conflicts.
Danny?
Uh, Daniel Rowland, Plesner Construction, potential conflict of interest.
Dr. Bowles?
Nicole Bowles, O H S U, no conflicts.
Okay, I think that's everyone on the line. Do we have anyone else? Oh, it looks like Tim, maybe?
Hey, what up? How are you?
Hey, will you introduce yourself and disclose any potential or, um, or actual conflicts of interest?
Tim Zimmerman, indoor cultivation systems and, uh, I'm sure I have conflicts of interest.
Hi. Um.
All right.
Going to.
All right. Are we gonna, let's go ahead and just dive right into it then.
Yeah, I'll share my screen with you. You can see the letter. Um, let me just double check something real quick here.
Yeah, well, I can definitely tell you there's been a huge impact on the, on the industry, the community, families, you know, and, you know, displaced employees out there. It's been crazy and Oregon's not alone. We've seen this all across the nation. So I'm, I'm glad we're, uh, bringing this to the forefront with this letter and, um, you know, putting our voice out there at least, and then hopefully people listen at the state level. So, um, I guess has everybody been able to look at the letter, the draft letter that Kimye sent out? That was dated June 28th, 2018.
Yeah.
Definitely need to think about that first.
That's funny. I was, I was copying a, a formal letter, uh, format. That's very funny.
Yeah.
Twenty-third.
Yeah.
Not from the past. Got it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but for one, I, I do like that we, we definitely are looking through this as a, you know, through a patient, patient protection lens as well as, you know, an industry lens and a community impact lens. Um, you know, so I thought it was, I, I thought it was worded really well.
I use Stephanie's letter as a, as a framework.
Yeah. But that's, you know, this from what I've seen in, what I've seen in, in other jurisdictions. Gosh, I'm echoing for some reason. Um, but I was saying that a lot, a lot of the traction, you know, from, especially from a lot of the government agencies, um, you know, going, going at it through this kind of lens, a public health impact lens is, is, is really the way to go, I think.
Do you?
I don't know if anybody.
Laura had posed some specific questions to the group. Um, let me see. I think I captured them here. Um, one question I specifically wanted to ask before we jump in is, did you want this letter to, um, to really focus on, um, the industry, sustainability for the industry and, um, accessibility for medical patients? Um, or, you know, patients who don't have medical cards anymore, but are obviously using it for medicinal purposes? Um, or did you want to, um, expand the letter to include impacts to social equity and grantees? I'm, I'm not invested either way, um, so I wanted to pose that to you all.
The grantee question, sorry, for the, the grantee question, I think it maybe, I mean, I think the social equity part is very important, given the mission of the grants. Um, what, and I suppose some of it depends on what your conversation with the grants comes out to be. Um, yeah, like if we're thinking about we have to postpone the rollout, that would certainly be something we would want to address.
Yeah, so, um, and this might, you know, it may be a, a second letter. Maybe this one focuses on, um, saving the, saving small businesses and saving the industry and, and accessibility for, for people who need it. Um, and maybe you guys decide after having a conversation that you want to craft a, a second letter that specifically talks about, um, the other impacts, other social equity impacts and effects on grantee organizations and their ability to serve. Um, but just a quick FYI for you. Um, I have been receiving letters, um, email from all of our current grantees, the year two grantees, about the fact that they're experiencing all the same kind of interruptions in service, inability to have their doors open to physically serve people. Um, and they're scrambling, but they also are basically, um, going, the way that their grants are structured right now, um, there's not the flexibility within them to allow for them to just, charge for general operating funds, just to keep the doors open. Um, and so I'm currently working, that's what the meeting after this is, on a set of emergency recommendations around all of our grants. Um, to, um, and a lot of funders, at least in the nonprofit world, are, um, looking to do the same thing, but convert, convert existing grant agreements to allow grantees to, um, to invoice for up to a hundred percent of the invoice, um, a hundred percent of the remaining funds towards general operating funds. Um.
Yeah, that's bullet point four on the actions.
So that.
Is that what that was intended for?
Right, it was a possible, anything in italics is kind of like, we didn't talk about this. I'm just putting it here so you're aware of it and you could put it in. Or you could cut it and, um, have, have a, you know, a separate debt letter dedicated to something like that. If that's something that you guys wanted to advocate for. Um, and after today's meetings, I can report back to you with more information about, um, you know, what, what we think as, as grant making staff, what we think are some possible solutions and what we want to advocate for at the bureau level and then also at the, um, level of council.
I think, yeah, I think a second letter, um, after you come back to us with those items. Um, at the very least, I would certainly like to advocate for, you know, an extension of their deadlines that they're supposed to meet. Um, and I think it would always be great to move towards a way, um, that's not a reimbursement system.
Um, yeah.
And so that's just, but that's a larger conversation, but, um, at the very least, extending their deadlines. Um, as someone who mostly relies on grant money, it is nice when the grants are able to come, you know, send an email out and say, you know, don't worry about your staff, we'll cover you. Um, granted, I have a meeting with the NIH today, this afternoon, so I'm hoping they're just gonna talk about similar things. But it's always possible that they could say that, you know, they're pausing funding or something like that.
Yeah. Um, okay, so it, is everybody on board with that, with, um, removing some of those grant and so specific kind of social equity, um, pieces from this and really focusing on the, um, patient access and, um, sustainability, survivability for the, um, small businesses and industry through this period? Like essential, essential businesses and potentially, um, policymaking.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, um, I, I definitely think we need to, then highlight both of those, but definitely put, you know, accessibility, patient access, um, you know, at the forefront with, you know, sustainability of the industry really coming from that. Sustainability of access, so, cause like, you know, OLCC is already, is now gonna be allowing, you know, curbside pickup.
And no more than one.
So.
Stephanie, you were on that call. Were, Al, were you on that call as well?
Uh, no, I just got the, the, you know, the emails that OLCC sends out. It was the same one that Steph sent out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
You know, it was just a little aside that Steve Marks made in the beginning, but they're pretty clear that Governor Brown, is going to be, um, banning all gatherings, so I'm unclear what's going to happen today.
Sure.
I don't know if addressing this to city council and the mayor is enough.
Well, so that's a second question I have for you all is, um, of course, we can kind of aim this at the mayor, but do you want stronger language in here around needing to advocate as a city for, um, Portland's cannabis businesses in, uh, in, uh, advocating at the state level?
Hmm. I mean, we'd easily be able to dovetail over and put in some stronger language targeted towards the state.
Did anyone read the, did anyone read the draft stuff that came out that Willamette Week got ahold of last night and all the stuff? And they've got cannabis businesses in there as a essential service right now, what Brown is kind of contemplating? Did anyone see that?
No.
Uh, most, most states have, have declared cannabis businesses as, you know, as essential businesses for, you know, public health and welfare.
Okay.
Yeah, I was reading that. The draft came out and got reported on this morning pretty early. And so I read that and down toward the middle of that article, it talks about cannabis business. I'll see if I can find it and forward it to the email string here. Hold on a sec.
Um, do you also want me to do a greater emphasis on, um, just making it really clear that cannabis businesses will not, um, be, uh, will not be receiving any of the federal government's emergency small business loans?
I think that's very important. If we have to close our doors, you know, it's, it's definitely full-on disruption for the industry.
Yeah.
Oh.
Um, Laura had.
Also.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're saying worst case scenario, it could be 18 months.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, what restrictions look like in 18 months if we're kind of reaching the, the peak of those sorts of restrictions now, and then there's some sort of, um, public health criteria for easing those on the backside. Um, Dr. Bowles, do you have any sense of that?
No, we have, uh, no idea. I imagine we can't continue like this for 18 months for people's mental health. Um, so it's really just about getting the curve to flatten and then I imagine we'll slowly start ramping up. But I just don't think it's, it's practical to go like this for 18 months.
Laura had also proposed in her email, um, adding a couple of specific things that, um, that you might want for action items now. For instance, she says, um, stay on commercial evictions. Um, immediate small business loans or grants for cannabis businesses for rent and payroll. Um, and she gave the example of what Washington County is doing for restaurant and bar owners. Um, do you, uh, do you want those things added? I can fold those in.
Yeah, I think it's important to add those.
Okay.
Especially if, uh, federal money won't be available.
Yeah. Emphasizing, okay. Um, let's see.
Okay, I just sent that article to the thread. If you guys want to read it, it says, in brackets toward the bottom, cannabis shops will not be closed.
News, great. Um, okay. Um, so if I, uh, I can take another crack at this and then weave in maybe some of the things that you want to highlight and emphasize a little bit more urgently within the body. Um, otherwise, are there any things in here that you guys, more importantly, don't want in here specifically? No?
I just noticed one small thing was that I typed it at the front desk, switch tasking, and let me switch screens back to the other one. In that last paragraph before the bullet list, I called it Corona dash COVID-19 instead of saying full coronavirus, COVID-19 in parentheses.
Gotcha.
Wait, what, what was the update? Sorry.
A, um, a, uh, addition of the full coronavirus, um, and then parentheses COVID-19. And I actually will do that up earlier too, so that we can use COVID-19 throughout.
Yeah, COVID-19 is the disease, coronavirus is the virus, or SARS-CoV-2 is the virus. So if you mean the virus, you gotta give, use its name. If you mean the disease, you gotta use its name.
Okay. Okay. Um, Dr. Knox?
Hey.
Is there anything in the letter? Um, we're kind of at the point, uh, let me just say, I don't know how long you've been listening in, but I'll, um, I don't know if.
Since like five after. I've been, I've just been taking it all in.
Okay, good. Um, is there anything?
Crank it up.
In here that you don't, that you absolutely don't want to remain in the letter? Anything that you want taken out?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
No, no, just after all this is said and done, I want more emphasis out of the adult market to be on patients. If we're, if we're using patient access as a very significant and important leverage point.
Okay.
Um, for calling our adult use market essential. I said, I think it's right to do so, but we cannot forget the patients once this is said and done. For the medical program. I want, I want to see a lot more emphasis on collectively reprising a really strong medical program.
How was the weekend?
Mine's actually pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, just like I, just trying to stay outside.
Um.
Then we were like, we were playing volleyball.
If you're having a side conversation, can you?
Watch screen and square.
Your computer?
Uh-uh, not yet.
It came out like last year, but, um, it's definitely.
Al, we have a couple of things that you guys need to officially informally vote on, and I should let you all know that this, um, this meeting, um, is being recorded and has been recorded. Um.
Yep.
So the, the three things that you need to vote on are, um, um, to actually draft a letter and send it to council, um, and potentially to the governor. I think that's something that you guys mentioned during this, this call. Um, uh, then you also need to vote to, um, adopt the letter, um, as outlined with the, um, changes that we discussed. And then also, um, you need a formal vote on record around, um, canceling the April meeting.
Okay, no, sounds good. Let's go ahead and take the April meeting first. Um, sounds like, you know, it'd be in everybody's best interest if we went ahead and canceled the April meeting. So I'd like to go ahead and propose that we cancel that meeting if there's a second.
I second.
Okay, well, all those in favor, please say aye. Al says aye.
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Danny says aye.
Stephanie, aye.
John, aye.
There was Nicole, aye.
All right, was that everybody?
I think that's everyone.
Okay, the, that motion passes unanimously. Um, then second, let's go ahead and take on the, the content of the letter first. Um, you know, based on the, the different changes that we talked about today, um, it sounds like you'll, are you gonna go ahead and put together kind of a final draft, Kimye?
I will.
To actually look at, or?
Yes, yes, I will put together a final draft later today and I'll send it back out to you for, for final, final confirmation, but, um, um, it would be good to get on record kind of a general consent to the.
Yeah, so what we're, uh, could you kind of go over really, just really quick, the bullet point changes that we were gonna go ahead and add?
Yep, hold on, my computer's going, workers here for a sec. Okay. So, uh-oh, where'd it go? Um, okay.
I mean, I think we got the gist of it. Um, I think everybody on, on the call would probably want to see a final version to go ahead and vote on. But I think the, the few, the few items about, you know, really remaining focused at the, the patient accessibility, um, lens and making sure that's, that's, you know, highlighted in the, in the letter. Because that's really how it's been highlighted, highlighted nationwide, because this really is a, it's a public health issue, because if it doesn't get any better and if it just gets worse, every business, not only cannabis, is gonna be impacted.
Yeah.
You know, as, as well, as well as, you know, just regular patients, not just, you know, cannabis patients. So we really need to focus on it as a, you know, public health, public welfare type issue. Um.
So what I.
Yeah.
Was, um, um, no major emissions, but we will, in this letter, um, stick to impacts to patient access and the industry. Um, um, this will be addressed to the mayor, but to, um, um, highlight and emphasize more of the language of, at, needing, um, the city to advocate, uh, um, to the state for these things for Portland and for throughout Oregon. Um, some, adding some specific policy actions around, um, uh, stay on commercial evictions, um, immediate small business loans or grants for cannabis businesses because they won't be eligible for any assistance from the federal government, um, that's being rolled out. Um, greater emphasis, um, on the, um, uh, why these services are essential to the patient community. Um, I think that's what I captured from the conversation.
Okay, that, that kind of jives with, I think, I think we're all on the same page on that, so. Okay, um, pending the final draft version that Kimye will be putting forth, um, I'd like to go ahead and move to, um, put a motion forward to adopt the content, additional content and revisions that we have outlined so far, uh, subject to the final draft that Kimye will send out via email. Um, if there's a motion to, I, I'd like to motion to approve that, uh, tentative content and, uh, move to, if there's a second, is there a second out there?
A second?
A second.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to, to adopt the pending content. Um, Al says aye.
Danny, aye.
Stephanie, aye.
John, aye.
Nicole, aye.
All right, was that everybody?
I didn't hear Tim and Rachel. I don't know if they're on still.
Uh, I'm on, yeah, I just, uh, I'm going in and out of service, so it's like, I don't think it's working, but I.
Great.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Hey, real quick, you know, I know that we're focusing a lot on, um, the patients and the medical side of things with this, which obviously is really good, but I mean, there's also, I mean, are they closing coffee shops right now? And what's the, I don't really, is that, I'm just wondering, is that everyone's real intention is to just focus on the patients and the medical side of things? Or is it, are we just using that as a way to?
No, again, it's a, it's a, it's a public health, public welfare type thing, because obviously we know that, that there is, are adults out there that use cannabis on, you know, on a regular basis for, you know, whatever consumption needs they have. Um,
I agree with that statement for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it was meant to be kind of a public, public health, mental health, public welfare. You know, from what I've been reading and I've heard about in other jurisdictions, that's, it's all encompassing. I don't think any one jurisdiction is limited just to medical, you know, dispensaries. Obviously, there's states that only have medical, but.
Oh, yeah, totally, I wasn't.
State like, yeah, state like California, they, they've considered all cannabis businesses essential businesses. And their, and the, the, you know, the ancillary supply chain is also essential suppliers.
Um, I. You might be hearing from Tim is, um, that, that we could try and also use a little bit more language to emphasize, um, the impact of this on, on small kind of mom and pop businesses.
Um. Right.
The, like, local, small businesses and also, um, that when we use the term medical patients, that's also with the understanding that, you know, the majority, vast majority of medical patients are purchasing through the, um, adult use.
Right, right.
Now, as opposed to formally as patients.
Well, I'm not trying to drop a nuclear bomb on this thing. I'm just saying, like, if we're gonna use patients in medical, then let's be sincere patients in medical. Otherwise, let's just talk being practical and reasonable and saying, you know, there's social distancing, blah, blah, blah. You know, the business is important.
Yeah.
Whatever. And I'm gonna cut out on you guys again in about thirty seconds.
So I, I, how about I, um?
Well, so, so I, I'm, I'm sort of confused by, because I already made my, so my piece about the medical patient, um, moving forward. But I think we've said enough about the medical patients. I mean, if OLCC is already gonna allow curbside service and cannabis shops won't be closed because they are considered essential, then are we preaching to the choir?
Hmm.
I, I think, I think, you know, to support Tim and that other folks on this call, we think some emphasis needs to be placed on protecting small businesses. I, I think that's, because that's still up in the air. I think patients are being taken care of in one way or another. And so I would just, I would prefer the emphasis not to be that, because I know it's sincere coming out of our group. I do believe that, but I don't think the industry at large is sincere about taking care of patients. I just don't. And I don't want to use it in that way, unless this industry is going to be committed from here until forever, um, to taking care of patients.
So how about I?
I cannot be a part of using it as a leverage point.
Yeah.
I agree. I think it would like, I think it would cheapen what we're doing, you know?
Yeah, okay.
To do that.
Okay.
Let me, um. Let me take a shot at, um, making some changes to the letter based on the conversation that you guys have had today. I'll send that out by the end of the day today and then you guys can, um, uh, let me know if it's getting closer or, um, that's great, let's get it out the door, whatever, um, wherever you're at. We'll just, I'll take action on, on sending it, um, on your behalf or it gets sent directly from, you know, Al and Stephanie and, and John as your leadership. We can work details, but, um, um.
No, that sounds good.
I've heard.
I think in the interest of time, let's go ahead and look at.
Um, and then I think the last vote that you guys need to do is actually to, um, to kind of direct me to do this.
Yeah, I think, um, as far as sending out the final letter.
Oh, to create.
Is that right?
The group, uh, agree and are all on board that you want to create this letter and send it.
Oh, yeah, no, okay. So let's go ahead and put forth a motion to approve sending out a letter, uh, to city council and the mayors, but are we also gonna include letter, a, a letter to the governor at this time, guys?
I think you could say.
I think we should. We should hit everyone.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, I can advocate with the. Yeah, I mean, I, um, I can advocate with the bureau and also government relations that, um, that the city get on board, um, and support, you know, sending it to the governor.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and, uh, motion, uh, put a motion on the table to go ahead and put forth the final letter to send out to city council, uh, the mayor and, you know, state government, uh, as, as applicable. Anybody second?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, Al says aye.
Danny, aye.
Richard, aye.
Stephanie, aye.
All right, I think motion passes.
Sweet.
All right, so those are the three items, and, um, Kimye, you'll be sending out an email by end of the day as far as the draft final version.
I'll send out a revised draft for you guys, and then once I get the okay from all of you, um, on the content, then, then, um, we'll put it, uh, into a little bit more kind of formal aesthetic, and then, um, send it however it needs to be sent.
Okay. And we'll just reply back to the email?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, then I think, uh, we're good then, guys? Is that right, Kimye, nothing else on the agenda?
I'm sorry, we didn't have more time just to check in and see how you guys are doing. Um, I hope that you're doing well, and I apologize, I have to, to jump off, um, but I will, maybe we could have another half hour check-in at some point soon, so that way I can update you on all the stuff that's rolling out fast and furious with the grants.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, that'd be great, but in the meantime, you guys, you know, sending you all healthy vibes.
Yeah, take care.
Yes, take care.
Take care, everyone.
All right, uh, move to adjourn.
Thanks for the early morning meeting, I think you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Out of my pajamas.
All right, we're adjourned, thanks, guys.
Okay, bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.